Yeah. It was in the chat.
Oh, it was in the chat.
It was in the chat. And then I did it. Good to be here. Tom.
Do you want to? Depends on if you watch the video.
Of course.
Depends on if you watch the video. Okay. So then yeah. My brain is really frazzled. All right, you guys ready? Everybody's ready? I'd like to call to order the June 12th, 2025, meeting of the Westbridge Water School Committee. Please rise for the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, great and justice for all.
Moment of silence. He's deceded. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting will be livestreamed for cable. A recording of this meeting will also be posted on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website, wb-cam.org. Okay, our first order of business is approval of the minutes from the June 2nd meeting. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion questions? No? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right. So moved. Next is public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members shall limit the comments to three minutes and are reminded that public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. Personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to new business. We have the agreement of the West Bridgewater Education Association, which is a voting issue. Do you want to speak to this?
I will. So we are working with the union to put together the complete document. What was done in the past, we've kind of collaborated on that, making sure all the changes are appropriately put in there, including salary scales for the different groups. So it's in process. I know that they're finishing up at the end of the year, so it does usually take a few weeks. So once that's finalized and checked off by our attorney, school committee, and their WBA and the MTA, then we'll go to print. Every other time, we share printing costs, so they did it last time, it's our turn this time. So we'll figure out the number we need, and then we'll have a complete document with a signature page that you'll all have access to, and then we'll have signatures done.
Okay. Before we discuss any of the, if we review any questions, I'm going to make a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement as presented to us between the West Bridgewater School Committee and the West Bridgewater Education Association. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Any questions? No? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so moved. All right, next is the Reed's quarterly report. Mr. Bodwell?
So including your packet is the quarterly update. Reed's puts that out there for your review, and if you have any questions or concerns, I do, a member of the board of directors for both Reed's and North River, so we just recently had our last meeting of the year, so. Again, I feel they're doing a really good job, and all superintendents agree that the director is doing a nice job in providing our information.
Any questions? Okay. All right, so we're moving on to unfinished business, the middle, senior, high school internship program. Mr. Hannah's with us tonight?
Yes. I first want to thank Mr. Hannah for, we have shared out the manual with both our attorney and with our insurance company. Attorney got back with some initial thoughts on it, which Mr. Hannah has incorporated into the document still in the draft form, and we'll wait to hear back from the insurance company. So a lot of good movement on that, and we know there's probably more to come as we go through creating procedures and protocols for this program, but overall, the attorney was very positive, felt it was a very good thing for the district, just had some checkbox things we wanted to accomplish.
So thank you, and thank you, Dr. Bodwell. Dr. Bodwell. Jeez, not yet, right? The adjustments that we made based on the attorney's feedback were very clear and obvious that was a need. Those are areas that certainly stand out, such as transportation issues, immigration status, or undocumented students. We also added a piece of language about students that may be, you know, school phobic or not coming to school on a regular basis, and also providing, you know, making sure that we're meeting the needs of all students with this opportunity. Please note that this is, again, a pilot for the upcoming school year, so we're going to learn a lot, and we have presented the opportunity to know more than five rising seniors, and our goal is to see how this works and develop a positive relationship with some community business owners who are already, have shared the interest in partnering with us as a paid internship. Again, I just want to qualify that this is a non-Chapter 74 Mass. General Law Cooperative Education placement. This is a paid internship, but it still serves the needs of students that are looking to pursue employment immediately upon graduation. And this gives them a leg up, and we are specific to what type of industry in terms of the application process, which is why the application is so lengthy, because we do want to see the application be something where students can gain hours towards licensure in various areas. So if the, if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer and try to get this moving forward so that, again, no application has been handed out pending the board's decision.
Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I did have a comment when I was reading through it. Under the eligibility, it says the last bullet is the student must be able to provide transportation to and from. I think if we're going to add the transportation barrier thing, we probably should.
Yeah, sorry, I missed that. Yep, no, that's, yeah, I'll start that, and then I'll refer to what was recently added in red with the transportation barriers.
I have a question. You're saying five to 10 kids this first year.
Just no more than five.
No more than. The application process, are these students who have already secured?
So.
Or are you saying you've applied and now you have the opportunity to secure?
Yeah, that's a great question. Part of the application process, the idea is that a student should come into the conversation having an idea of where they're going to work. So in conversations with those kids, that was the first thing, you know, would you be able to secure employment and be paid to be able to do that? Because during that timeframe, also, the licensure piece is that they'll be acquiring hours under a master, for example, plumber. And that's the goal. So the idea is that they would have an idea in mind, but that's certainly, you know, part of this too is helping them find, you know, you might have that kid that's just completely lost, like, I don't have a clue, but I know this is what I want to do. That's the role of the worksite liaison, is to try to help them find placement locally, make those calls, do those introductions, and then get the parents involved.
Any other questions? Well, so I asked a bunch of questions last time, and you got the questions back to me, but just for the sake of, you know, the public, I'm just going to go through them if that's all right with everybody. So I had asked if there was a formal response protocol for injuries and emergencies?
Yes. So we modified the existing template for, so this would be something that we would have in this handbook, but yes, we created a form that would be used as part of the internship experience that we would give the employer.
Right. And then my other safety-related question was, is there a response protocol for, it's sort of related, if a student is put in an uncomfortable situation or does not feel safe?
Yep. So that's also, there is a procedure now in place that we would include with the employer's packet, as well as for the student and parents' packet, which would be steps on reporting an uncomfortable situation.
And then my other questions were related to the internship coordinator, to your position, and the worksite liaison. What is the workload involved?
So I felt, in all honesty, that it's an hour a week. We do have regular check-ins. It would not interfere with the current position of assistant principal. I'd be able to manage that as well and do the, and put the time and effort needed into this as well.
Okay, good. I mean, because that's what I was, I'm just thinking about if this is a program that grows, and if there's more hours, and then that's something that has budgetary implications that we kind of need to be mindful of. Will this role include vetting sites for safety and appropriateness prior to site being offered and approved?
Yes. So thankfully, the Mass. DESI CTE office has created a template for you to be able to go out and check the worksite to ensure that checklist is met. It begins with, obviously, workman's compensation, as well as the employer carrying insurance, and that is up to date and relevant, but ultimately, there is a checklist for us to visit and go through. And with my background in CTE and CTE licensure, as both CTE principal, assistant principal, and CTE director, I feel comfortable I can get through that and make sure that the site is acceptable.
Follow-up question on the checklist, which you just answered, how often are the site visits going to occur?
Yeah, so we thought, honestly, and what my experience has also been in, not only in a regional, but a comprehensive CTE high school, the, once the worksite obviously has to be predetermined at the beginning, another visit throughout the semester would be appropriate, and then obviously, a third visit at the end of the semester to help with the assessment of the student's job at the workplace, so that the student does get the credits and get graded as such.
Right. And then my last set of questions is just related to grades and the assessment. So originally, I said there was a general description of how grades are determined and will there be a rubric, but I see that you've added that now.
Yes.
Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's, we've added the rubric, and obviously, the employer is going to have a lot of voice in that, but it's also, the time cards are the key and the accountability, which is fantastic. And then obviously, their job performance, you know, we're not, we're not going to rate them based on, like, are they a skilled craftsman from day one, but it's going to be more about, you know, their effort, their accountability, and obviously, being able to be coached and taught on the job.
Job readiness. And then my last question is, what happens if the student loses the placement midterm?
Wonderful question, and so thankfully, you know, we would, the plan of attack would be to look for an immediate replacement for the position, pending that the student had it, lost it, based on their own neglect. If the student did have to come back in, depending on when it was in the semester, return back into school, we do offer currently a internship, one-period internship program that's unpaid, that's an option. We also have a contract with Edgenuity, which is an online program that allows students select the amount of weeks in which they are going to enroll in the program and also complete the course. And then we also offer career-safe awareness, which is put forth by OSHA, and the student can obtain a further certification in health and safety while they're in. Unfortunately, the credit piece would be then changed simply because the level of, you know, there wouldn't be a 10-credit placement. We'd try to bring them in, and then we'd also be able to add them into their, our own course of study here in terms of electives offered in the building.
And then just one other comment. I had asked that you change the pronouns so it's gender-neutral, and you did, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any other questions? You had just asked if it's a voting issue tonight?
Partly because if we're waiting to hear back from Mr. Ward from the insurance company, is there anything that could then change our vote, depending on what they say?
I mean, my feeling would be that anything we could still change, nothing will happen with anyone going out to a job site until after our August meeting. We still have August 18. I think getting, I think from the attorney, I think our application is in good shape. I think that seems to be good, and maybe some things that may be related to when they're out of the building or transportation that we can address. So I don't think, you know, a vote now, I still think we could make some, you know, changes and modifications to the manual on August 18.
Yeah, in general, it's going to be like a fluid document and a fluid program, right? So if we hear back from the insurance company, they want changes, we'll just vote again? Is that kind of how these things normally go?
Yeah, that would be great. I mean, I think ultimately, in my experience with this, in terms of whether it's a non-Chapter 74 paid internship, because there are plenty of CTE programs out there that are, don't have that Chapter 74 tag, Mass. General Law, and students are participating in it. It's the employer having the workman's compensation insurance protects our kids as soon as they get on to the site. Obviously, the school district as a whole, we're, we are obviously looking at our insurance company and saying, okay, if our students leave campus for any reason, just to go to the senior center because we asked them to, that's already embedded in the umbrella of a school insurance policy. So if they came back with anything, we could certainly pivot, and if it even meant we couldn't do it because they didn't feel that we were in compliance, then we would just schedule the kids for our existing school-to-career internship, which doesn't have the paid piece to it, and then we'd also schedule them for a course for those two periods.
And then just to clarify, on when you're saying the site visits that you periodically go out, what site specifically are you talking about?
Yes, it would be the actual, where the student is actually working.
Is working.
So if it's, and it's, again, fluid, in the sense that, let's say, for example, we go to the plumbing shop and we see that they're working here, but we also know that they will be going to other job sites, whether it might be residential or commercial, we would obviously check that out. We're not going to go to every home. Like, if they're working on a particular home down on Elm Street, we're not going to go visit that. We're just checking to make sure that where they're at, where they're stationed, where they're meeting is safe and it meets our checklist for personal protective equipment. You know, obviously, the safety and health of our students is number one, so we'd go through a series of checklist items for that.
I have a question regarding the satisfactory attendance. I know we mentioned that, I would argue that the children, students that are struggling to get to school are the ones that would benefit most from this.
True.
Does that, I mean, I know it takes into account the flexibility, it's disability-related, 25-4, but are there those instances where you think we could be eliminating somebody that this would really benefit?
You know, that's a great question. So when we first, which is great, why we're doing it with five students who we know have kind of, we've talked this up, we've know that it has changed. I mean, like, we have the data already after this was even brought, like, where a student was now engaged in coming to school. So I don't find that to be a concern, because obviously, we still have the mandated eight for a half-year course and 15 for the academic course, I mean, full-year course. We're going to still implement that, and if it becomes an issue, then we'll just have that student lose their, you know, obviously, because this is an additional piece where the employer is counting on them or trying to build a relationship. Right. So I think it will benefit a student wanting to come to school. I mean, the theory is, and I hope that if the application process comes in from a student who had terrible attendance, say, in their junior year, and, but fits all the other pieces and we give them that opportunity down the road, I think it would certainly benefit. And now, once they know that these five kids have done this, it's going to probably, yeah, just change now, like, because I can already tell you sophomores that are now moving in, rising juniors, who have learned a little bit about this opportunity, potential opportunity, are excited about it, because then they'll be reminded, hey, you know, you need to be here your junior year in order to be accepted into this program your senior year.
And I may have mentioned this last time, but I talked to a rising senior, and I asked him about the program. He said, I really hope to do it, but I need to get my grades up. And this was a couple of weeks ago, so he was thinking ahead of, I want to get my grades up so I can have the opportunity to participate.
So you're using it as a little bit of motivation here?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and that was the data I was referring to. That particular young man did pass all of his courses for the, for the school year, and his attendance improved, which was really struggling with his attendance, but it improved drastically. So he was able to meet the minimum criteria of the course subject areas and be on pace to graduate, which is what we were hoping.
So I'm correct in saying if this internship is in the afternoon, they can't be absent in the morning and then attend this?
No, 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 no. They have to come to school. Yep. They have to be in school, and that's a big piece of it, too. That's accountability. They can't just say, you know, if it's a holiday, absolutely, go right to work, 7:00 a.m. But, and the other good thing about this, too, is a lot of times employers will say, you know, come after your second block is over, you know, they wouldn't even have to attend power block unless we're keeping seniors in for meetings. But if they're struggling academically, we're going to keep them in during a little bit more time to get extra help. So we'll monitor their grades in-house, and then get, they might have to start a little bit later in the day, but ideally, they could leave right at 10:27.
One more question, just about if there was a student now or in the future who was on the fence for, like, qualifying for this, could they possibly qualify the second semester?
Yes, great question. Absolutely. Yep, second, that's a, I didn't even think about that, and even presenting this the first time around. Absolutely. Second semester changes are not unusual, and a lot of seniors have courses that are electives anyway, so, and if we can schedule their four major subjects, math, science, English, and history, or CGA, we call it, in the morning courses, then that would absolutely work.
Any other questions? So I'm going to make a motion that we approve the program pending the final revisions of the internship manual, once it's gone back to the attorney and back, and we hear from the insurance company.
Yeah, I would appreciate just being able to get a jumpstart on the kids and getting their paperwork done and let the employers know that we're still, you know, that it is not official, but, you know, we're at a point where we're, we're just waiting for one more, you know, round of feedback.
Okay. So move to approve the internship program pending the manual that we will review in August. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Hannah.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
So our next order of business is Superintendent Bodwell's evaluation. So let's see. I think, first of all, they're having the volunteers to do some reading, because it's going to be a lot of reading.
I can read it if you guys want to.
So we'll take some, we'll take some turns. So the way we did this last year, and I think it worked well, is to skip right to the indicators and then circle back up to the summary and the, the goals, if everyone's in agreement there. So I will start us off. I'm going to bring us down to the bottom of page eight. So we're looking at the instructional leadership standard, standard one. So just as a reminder, this is curriculum, instruction, assessment, evaluation, data-informed decision-making, and student learning. In the area of instructional leadership, Superintendent Bodwell has received an overall rating of proficient. Of the five rating evaluators, all five rated Superintendent Bodwell's performance in this area as proficient. Across all indicators, across all evaluators, 19 of the 24 were rated as proficient, lending to the overall rating by the committee. Most notably, all evaluators reached consensus that Superintendent Bodwell is proficient in indicators 1A curriculum and 1B instruction. The following key points and common themes were identified from narratives provided by individual members. Superintendent Bodwell is recognized as proficient in the area of instructional leadership with a clear commitment to student learning, curriculum development, and instructional support. Evidence submitted included curriculum maps, building walkthrough forums, MCAS action plans, administrator goals, student roundtable feedback, and assessment data from MCAS and STAR. The implementation of new initiatives, such as the Raising Multicultural Kids program, and the superintendent's focus on collaboration with principals and administrators, were noted as strengths. In the area of curriculum and instruction, evaluators acknowledged the inclusion of well-structured curriculum maps and the positive contribution of RMK, that's Raising Multicultural Kids, to the district's elementary program. Walkthrough templates were viewed as a constructive step towards consistency in instructional oversight, with one evaluator highlighting the potential of this tool to identify trends and guide future improvements. Some feedback suggested that broader sampling of curriculum artifacts and more detailed tracking of walkthrough outcomes would enhance alignment and transparency. Assessment practices and the use of data to inform instruction were frequently identified as areas for further growth. Although several data sources were provided, such as STAR scores, MCAS results, and student surveys, evaluators noted the absence of trend analysis or summary interpretation. Without accompanying insights, the raw data was often difficult to interpret and not, and did not clearly connect to decision-making or instructional adjustments. This concern was echoed in observations that some critical student concerns, including those related to school climate, have been identified across multiple sources, yet have not been clearly addressed in subsequent planning or communication. The evaluation indicator also emerged as a growth area. While administrator goals and mid-cycle reflections were submitted, evaluators noted a lack of individualized building-level goals and limited evidence of feedback or follow-up from the superintendent. This was seen as a missed opportunity to deepen the impact of the evaluation process and strengthen accountability for instructional outcomes. Across the narratives, there was a shared recognition of the superintendent's investment in instructional improvement and student-centered leadership. At the same time, evaluators encouraged a more deliberate connection between the data being collected and the actions being taken. Greater use of aggregated observation findings, clear communication around instructional priorities, and more visible integration of stakeholder feedback into decision-making were suggested as strategies to enhance instructional leadership moving forward. While only three members provided narrative feedback, two additional members rated the superintendent as proficient overall without submitting comments. Two newly-appointed members declined to participate. The feedback submitted supports a conclusion of proficiency in instructional leadership while identifying several areas where increased reflection, analysis, and alignment could further strengthen district impact. We will not go through all of the individual evaluations, but if anyone would like to speak to their evaluations under standard one, now's the time. No? Okay? Can I sum it up? Okay. So standard two, management and operations, begins on page 12. Karen, you want to take this one?
Sure.
Okay.
So for standard two, management and operations, the executive summary, in the area of management and operations, standard two, Superintendent Bodwell has received an overall rating of proficient. Across all indicators, across all evaluators, seventeen out of twenty-four were rated as proficient, which was seventy-one percent, lending to the overall rating by the committee. Of the five rating evaluators, three rated Superintendent Bodwell's performance in this area as proficient, and two rated his performance as needing improvement. Areas of strength were noted in scheduling and management information systems, two C, with all raters reaching consensus that Superintendent Bodwell is proficient in this area, and in fiscal systems, two E, with four raters indicating that Superintendent Bodwell is proficient in this area, and one rater indicating that Superintendent Bodwell demonstrated exemplary performance. Two areas for growth were noted in human resources management and development, two B, and law, ethics, and policies, two D, with three of the five evaluators rating this area as needing improvement. The following key points and common themes were identified from narratives provided by individual members. Superintendent Bodwell is recognized for strengths in fiscal management, stakeholder collaboration, and efforts to maintain a safe and supportive environment for students and staff. Budget development and capital improvement planning were described as transparent, detailed, and aligned with district goals. His engagement with the Safe Schools Committee and leadership and collective bargaining were cited as examples of his ability to foster productive working relationships and promote stability within the district. Efforts to improve emergency preparedness and safety protocols were acknowledged across the narratives. Documents such as the Medical Emergency Response Plan, or MERC, and Crisis Management Protocol reflect attention to a wide range of student needs. However, multiple evaluators identified concerns about outdated contact information, formatting issues, and a lack of clear revision timelines in these plans. These observations suggest an opportunity to strengthen internal processes for document review and ensure readiness in critical situations. Human resources management and development was frequently noted as an area of need, in need of further attention. While some progress was evident, such as the formation of a professional development committee and success in recent negotiations, feedback also indicated a need for deeper analysis of hiring trends and retention data. The high number of staff changes within a short timeframe, coupled with limited context provided in available documentation, raised questions about onboarding systems, mentoring, and transparency around staffing decisions. Additionally, community feedback regarding non-renewals of certain staff members pointed to the importance of clear communication and long-term planning in support of staff retention. In the area of legal compliance and policy implementation, feedback recognized the superintendent's attentiveness to policy updates and his ability to support school committee decision-making. At the same time, documents and monitoring reports indicated that certain plans require updates to remain in compliance with state regulations. Evaluators emphasized the need for consistent quality review processes and timely communication of revisions to stakeholders. While only four of the seven committee members submitted narrative feedback, the responses collectively point to areas of effective leadership as well as opportunities for growth. The overall body of feedback supports a conclusion of proficiency in management and operations while encouraging continued progress in operational oversight, internal evaluation, and clear responsive communication.
All right, and then would anyone like to add anything from their individual evaluations?
Yeah, I just think it, making sure that we're following guidelines and laws, and I know that may not be directly your role, but just making sure that there is a procedure in place that we're getting things up to date per the requirements of Mass. general law, we need to make sure that someone is responsible for that.
Yes, I totally agree, specifically.
That was the MERC. I know it was supposed to be submitted, I think it's in my individual comments, I'm going to see it real quick, it's been a while since I wrote it. Oh, God, let's see. I mean, I can certainly get it.
Sure, I know.
There was a certain date was supposed to be provided, and in that revision was supposed to be incorporated protocols for behavioral health needs.
Correct.
So that was kind of the biggest one for me, on top of some of the outdated information that was like, if we had a true emergency, hopefully, these people would know who to call, but the documents were supposed to be there to reassure everyone of this.
Right. Good. And just an update on that, the MERC is being updated this summer, before June 30th, by the school nurses and the adjustment counselors are working collaboratively on that, so that should be updated with everything for the end of June and then ready for the fall. So, thank you.
All right. Anything else on standard two? All right, I'll take it back for standard three, and then Perry, you volunteer for four? Good? Okay. So standard three is family and community engagement. In the area of family and community engagement, standard three, Superintendent Bodwell has received an overall rating of proficient. Of the five rating evaluators, four rated Superintendent Bodwell's performance in this area as proficient, and one rated his performance as exemplary. This is a notable improvement over last year's ratings, demonstrating considerable growth in this area. Across all indicators, across all evaluators, fifteen of the twenty were rated, fifteen of the twenty were rated as proficient, which was seventy-five percent. Three of the twenty were rated as exemplary, which was fifteen percent, and two out of twenty were rated as in need of improvement, ten percent, lending to the overall rating by the committee. During this evaluation cycle, family and community engagement is a significant area of strength for Superintendent Bodwell. The following key points and common themes were identified from narratives provided by individual members. Superintendent Bodwell is widely viewed as committed to family and community engagement, with multiple evaluators describing his consistent presence at school events, proactive communication through newsletters, and genuine effort to build trust with families. Tools such as the district newsletter, Superintendent Coffee Hours, and the bullying and climate and culture surveys were noted as meaningful avenues for outreach and feedback collection. His approachability and visibility within schools were frequently cited as important strengths. Several evaluators commended the superintendent's use of surveys to gather stakeholder input, highlighting the transparency of sharing results and the potential these tools offer to guide decision-making. There was a shared appreciation of his willing, for his willingness to solicit and consider feedback from staff, students, and families. At the same time, multiple narratives pointed to opportunities for improvement in the areas of responsiveness and two-way communication. While newsletters and updates were described as informative and comprehensive, the volume and formatting of these communications at times made it difficult for families to quickly locate key messages. A few evaluators noted that despite strong outward communication, follow-through on individual parent concerns was sometimes inconsistent or undocumented. Specific suggestions included offering more consistent access to virtual participation in forums and providing clearer summaries of how survey findings are being addressed. Survey data supported this theme. While over ninety-three percent of parents reported that the superintendent communicates district information effectively, a smaller percentage, approximately seventy-five percent, felt that parent concerns are addressed in a timely manner. This gap was interpreted as a sign that while outreach efforts are robust, continued attention is needed to strengthen responsiveness and ensure stakeholder concerns translate into visible action. The overall narrative feedback reflects a consensus that family and community engagement is a strong and visible component of Superintendent Bodwell's leadership. At the same time, several evaluators encouraged ongoing refinement in how family input is received, acknowledged, and acted upon. The feedback supports a conclusion of proficiency in this standard with room to enhance accessibility, responsiveness, and follow-up to further strengthen trust and collaboration with families. Anybody want to comment from their individuals?
Sure.
Okay.
This, in my opinion, is your strong side.
Absolutely.
I think that your commitment to the school districts and the students especially in the school district is commendable. Everyone wants to say that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the comments that, that I put in my individual evaluation is related to your newsletters, that they are so robust, and I was the one that suggested newsletters years ago.
Do remember that.
And now, and now, I'm the one saying, you can dial it back just a little bit, because you do, you offer so much information that sometimes the important messages get lost. So I think that you go above and beyond, and the effort that you put into your newsletters is exemplary, and that's fantastic. I think it would actually be more than exemplary, because I'm asking you to, like, kind of dial it down a little. You're, you're, you're putting so much in in that area that I think, you know, it's a lot sometimes for parents to find what they're looking for.
I'll tone the one down for tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
It's in graphs. But, thank you.
Okay. Standard four, professional culture, begins on page nineteen. Do you read for us? Thank you.
In the area of professional culture, standard four, Superintendent Bodwell has received an overall rating of proficient. Of the five rating evaluators, all five rated Superintendent Bodwell's performance in this area as proficient. This is again a notable improvement over last year's ratings, demonstrating growth in this area. Across all indicators, across all evaluators, twenty-five out of thirty were rated as proficient, eighty-three percent. Three out of thirty were rated as exemplary, ten percent, and two out of thirty were rated as in need of improvement, seven percent, lending to the overall rating by the committee. During this evaluation cycle, professional culture is a significant area of strength for Superintendent Bodwell. The following key points and common themes were identified from narratives provided by individual members. Superintendent Bodwell is regarded as proficient in the area of professional culture, with strong evidence of commitment to professional growth, long-term planning, and the promotion of reflective and inclusive district climate. Evaluators noted his active participation in professional learning, attending major conferences such as the Mass. Summer Institute, MASCE, Mass. Joint Conferences, and the Mass. Midwinter Meeting, as well as his support for educator learning through partnerships and targeted training initiatives. His leadership in articulating district values as seen in the West Bridgewater Educational Program for the MSBA project and his involvement in collaborative efforts such as Professional Development Committee reflect a deliberate focus on shared vision, planning, and staff engagement. Positive contributions were also noted in promoting a culture of inclusion and continuous improvement. District-wide professional development offerings in cultural, culturally responsive practice and the rollout of the Raising Multicultural Kids, RMK, curriculum, were identified as meaningful steps towards supporting a sense of belonging. Public celebrations of learning, such as the academic showcase, further reinforce the superintendent's emphasis on high expectations and community recognition. While, while several aspects of professional culture were commended, multiple evaluators identified managing conflict as an area of continued growth. Narratives described instances where communication, particularly in response to stakeholder concerns, could have been more timely, direct, or solutions-focused. Survey data echoed these observations, with only sixty-point-two percent of staff agreeing that the superintendent provides leadership in addressing district challenges, significantly lower than the other performance areas. Some feedback suggested a pattern of conflict avoidance or delayed resolution in sensitive situations and recommended the use of a broader range of strategies to resolve disagreements more effectively. That said, one evaluator observed growth in this area compared to the prior year, noting an improvement in tone, empathy, and responsiveness. Internal communication with staff also emerged as an area where clarity and organization could be improved. While newsletters and data report demonstrate consistent outreach to families, feedback indicated that these communications may be dense or overly detailed, limiting their accessibility. This concern was supported by survey data showing a gap between family and staff perceptions of communication effectiveness. Overall, while only four of seven committee members provided narrative feedback, the responses reflect consistent themes of thoughtful planning, professional commitment, and inclusive leadership. They also identify specific opportunities to enhance communication and conflict resolution practices. The evidence supports a conclusion of proficiency in this standard, with continued growth in strategic communication and leadership during challenging interactions likely to further strengthen the district's professional culture.
Okay. Would anyone like to speak to any of their individual evaluations? No? Okay. So moving back up to the top, so beginning on page two, I'll read the summary, and we will go through the goals. Superintendent Bodwell has received an overall rating of proficient based on compilation of individual evaluations from three current committee members and two former members who provided direct observation from August 2024 to April 2025. Two current members, elected in April 2025, have abstained from providing ratings due to their limited direct observation of Superintendent Bodwell, given the timing of their election to the committee. Both new members have provided feedback on evidence and/or goals, which has been included below. Progress towards goal. The committee as a whole rated the superintendent's performance on this year's goals as follows. District improvement goal number one, the elementary school building project, was rated as met. Superintendent Bodwell was widely commended for his leadership in advancing the MSBA elementary school building project. Evaluators praised his dedication to timelines, communication with stakeholders, and coordination of committee work. His role in keeping the district aligned with state expectations and informed throughout the process was recognized as a major strength. Rated as met, but, ret, as met by four evaluators, exceeded by one evaluator, and I just noted a typo there, so I'm just going to change that. Okay. Whoops. Student learning goal, instructional leadership was rated as met. The creation and implementation of a new walkthrough and observation tool marked a significant step towards strengthening instructional oversight. Evaluators noted that while the form has been developed and initial walkthroughs have occurred, additional work is needed to ensure consistent use and follow-up. Opportunities remain to incorporate data from observations into coaching cycles, trend analysis, and administrative feedback. This goal was rated as met by three evaluators, again with the typo, by three evaluators, and significant progress by two evaluators. Professional practice goal, communication, has been rated as significant progress. Multiple evaluators highlighted growth in communication practices, including the introduction of climate and culture surveys, expanded parent outreach, and the use of executive summaries. These tools demonstrated a genuine effort to collect stakeholder feedback. Several evaluators encouraged continued refinement by developing clearer links between identified concerns and responsive actions, especially around topics such as bullying and student behavior. This was rated as significant progress by three evaluators and met by two evaluators. I must, I must have just copied-pasted it, because it's the repeating typo here. And finally, the district improvement goal number two, culture of belonging, has been rated as met. This goal was supported by a number of initiatives, including SEL programming, inclusive curriculum enhancements, and the promotion of a caring school culture through programs like Wildcat Pride and PBIS. Evaluators saw evidence of a positive foundation and urged continued efforts to connect programming to measurable outcomes and student experience, particularly using feedback from surveys to inform future planning. Rated as met by four evaluators and significant progress by one evaluator. The following key points and common themes were identified from narratives provided by individual members. Superintendent Bodwell continues to be recognized for his deep commitment to the West Bridgewater School community. His visibility at events, accessibility to families, and collaborative leadership style were consistently described as hallmarks of his approach. Several evaluators highlighted the superintendent's skill in aligning district initiatives with long-term goals. His contributions to capital planning, professional development structures, and cross-stakeholder committees reflect thoughtful, mission-aligned leadership. The volume and organization of submitted evidence increased this year, demonstrating greater attention to documentation. However, evaluators encouraged further development in reflection and synthesis, transforming raw data into insight, identifying trends, and clarifying next steps. Superintendent Bodwell's work in expanding feedback channels, newsletters, surveys, and forums was praised. Several evaluators expressed a desire for more streamlined communication formats and more visible response strategies to concerns, concerns raised by staff and families. Progress was noted by some evaluator, evaluators in tone and responsiveness, especially in comparison to prior years. Others emphasized the importance of strengthening leadership presence during complex situations and ensuring confidence among staff and the superintendent's ability to address conflict and challenges effectively. The committee acknowledges the meaningful progress Superintendent Bodwell has made during the 2024-2025 school year across multiple dimensions of leadership. His steady guidance, responsiveness to feedback, and commitment to improvement are evident throughout his work. The overall proficient rating reflects confidence in his leadership and optimism about the district's continued progress under his direction. The committee sincerely thanks Superintendent Bodwell for her service and looks forward to continued collaboration and success in the 2025-2026 school year. Would anyone like to add some individual comments?
Sure.
Okay.
Trying to gather my comments. So obviously, this is my first full year working with you. I'm a little tired of the evaluator, so I just think it's the opportunity to point out the areas where I personally would like to see more attention. I know you had also kind of commented that we didn't provide a lot of comments on the things that were going well, the things that were being done correctly, but part of that is that when you give a proficient rating, which means you're doing your job as you're supposed to be doing it, we're not required to give any comments. I do my best to give, obviously, some, some good with the, maybe we could work on this. So I just appreciate you being here. So, I just appreciate you being open to all discussions. You're always open, whether it's a phone call, email, in person, and I appreciate that. And I just, you know, I don't want you to think that, especially where, you know, I have no idea where it needs improvement in one of the standards, that I think you're doing a bad job. That's not the case. But I do think it's important to highlight areas that we've been doing well.
Totally understand.
Anybody else want to add anything? Okay.
I appreciate the feedback. First, I want to thank my administrative team for everything, because I can't do my job effectively without them and the educators and the families and the students. So, I'm very fortunate to work in West Bridgewater with everyone collectively. And I do appreciate the feedback. I'll do what I did last year, is I read through and I highlight things, and I make lists of things that I can do to improve and put them into categories. And, you know, that process has already started with the MERC. With, you know, we've already arranged to have monthly updates in staffing, so you'll get an update every month on resignations, people who leave, and new hires, and you'll see that, so you'll be able to, you know, understand better. Because we always do it at the beginning of the year, but then it's, you know, maybe word of mouth, so you'll see that. And walkthroughs. I agree, we have a template, we have been doing walkthroughs. We have two administrative meetings over the summer, one in June and one in August. And it's very intentional, because in the June one, we talk about the year, we talk about what we're going to work on for the next year, and in August, we solidify that, and we really plan for the future. So, I think feedback is always good. Improvement is always an opportunity to get better for the district and personally for myself. So, I take that as a, I wouldn't say even a challenge, but as an opportunity. And I do welcome anyone who wants to come and shadow. The fun stuff, the greeting of the kindergartners and the preschoolers in the morning, to sitting in on meetings, to walking schools and so forth. It's, you know, I think we do this job because we love it, but there's also a lot that goes into it, and I welcome anyone in the opportunity to come and see it. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to say, this is my fifth evaluation with you. And just to kind of echo what you said about taking feedback, I have noted that trend. Every year, the feedback we give, you take it to heart and you incorporate it into goals, and you're very easy to work with. You're very approachable and communicative, even if it's later in the day. I mean, we all work opposite hours. You work during the day, we do our day jobs during the day, so our school committee stuff happens at night, and you are very responsive, and I appreciate that.
And when I question back, it's not that it's meant to question, it's just meant to provide information, but then still obviously take the feedback.
Great. Does anyone have anything else? No? All right. So, I move to enter, or to approve Mr. Bodwell's 2024-2025 evaluation as written. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Further discussion? No? Okay. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Perfect. So, a motion passed, three to zero, with two abstentions. Okay. So, moving on, questions and recommendations by the committee. I know, Perry, you had something you wanted to bring up?
I do.
Go for it.
No? It was brought up to me recently that the, I believe it's the student handbook, has a section in there about out-of-school suspension, and it says, "The student is required to remain at home and is restricted from the school building and grounds. The student may not participate in any school activity or sport while on out-of-school suspension." It was brought to my attention that, like, somebody questioned this, and it was explained that it doesn't actually apply to school grounds, only to school activities on school grounds. I just want to make sure that we either clarify this within the handbook or are sure on the interpretation, either way. Because as it's written, it says, I feel like there is no room for interpretation in the way it's written, where it says, "The student is restricted from school buildings and grounds." And I feel like if that's really just for school activities, I think we should add that.
Sure. No, it's a good question, and when the parent did reach out to me, I first forwarded that to the principals to make sure our message was consistent. I gave them my thought on it, and I said, "What's your feedback?" And they all agreed. So, when a student's suspended from school, really, it's suspended from school events and activities, and we have jurisdiction over that. If they show up at a school or a playground on school property at, you know, six o'clock on a Friday night, you know, we don't have the jurisdiction at that point to exclude them. They're not inethans trespass, but they are excluded from all school events. If that were a high school student, and it's a Friday night football game, yes, they would be excluded because it's a school event. If it was a youth game on Saturday morning, first of all, you know, more likely not, the administrators aren't going to be there to, you know, to say they can't come, but it's also really not their jurisdiction. So, I do agree, making it clear in the handbook, and that's one thing I did respond back to the principals, and we need to make this clear. But I think, and we also don't have the ability, nor should we be relaying information to youth organizations, clubs, and activities if a child is suspended from school. So, them knowing that. And that's, it has come up in the past, but again, I'm glad the parent asked the question, because I think we could be more clear. If it's school-sponsored, school-related, we have jurisdiction. If they just show up for a youth basketball game Sunday morning, that's more the parent decision, not the school's decision. And that was agreed upon by the principals.
So, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So, I want to use a district sporting event as an example, let's say a football game, a high school football game, and the student is excluded because they are suspended, and the family brings the student, and they watch from the stands. Is that where they need to be? Are they going to be escorted off the property?
I think it'd be a conversation, yeah. More likely than not, they would be told they can't be there because it's a school event. Same thing if it was the prom.
Yeah.
If the student's suspended from school, and they want to attend the prom, but the prom's at Gillette Stadium, they still can't attend, or they still couldn't attend homecoming dance if it was in the gym.
Yeah, I see the gray area of...
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, of a parent bringing their student and saying, "Hey, they're excluded from playing, we're just observing, we're on public property." And so, I do see that. I see that being something that's a little bit gray and open to interpretation.
Yeah. I mean, it's very easily can be made clear in the handbooks. Good, and we'll make sure that's in there for August.
Okay. All right. So, the next regular school committee meeting is August 18th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. here in the middle, senior, high school Learning Commons. I'm going to move to enter executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and not to reconvene in open session. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. This is a roll call vote. Mrs. Mayiskowski?
Rock and roll. Dragon egg?
Yes.
Maria Lozari?
Yes.
Christine Van Sosky? John Wall?
Yes.
And then, we have all guesses.
So moved, five to zero. Have a good evening, everyone.